Commissioner Collins?
Here.
Commissioner Gary?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Talantino?
Here.
Commissioner Twardy?
Here.
Okay, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. I would ask those with cell phones, if they would please put them on vibrate or silence them, we would appreciate it. Also, this past weekend, the devastation that occurred in Holden Hancock and the surrounding areas is just tremendous, and certainly our thoughts and prayers are with those communities. I know the manager, we have letters going out, just talking about possibly helping, asking if they need any help through our, they're a long way away on the western end, but if there's something we can do, the manager will be reaching out and talking with those communities, we appreciate that. Okay, we'll do, at this point, Item B, Proclamations and Recognitions, and we're happy and very fortunate to have with us tonight Senator Wayne Schmidt, our Lansing senator, and I'm gonna meet him at the podium, he has a proclamation to present to the city.
Thank you, Your Honor. Certainly my, by the way, I addressed the commission, now you're coming over here, Mayor, but I'll still address the commission. It's certainly my pleasure to be here this evening on behalf of myself, State Representative Lee Chatfield, and the governor of the great state of Michigan, Rick Snyder, and Lieutenant Governor Calley, a tribute commending the successful 350th anniversary of Sault Ste. Marie. And I'm not gonna bore you with reading it all and everything, you'll be able to read it yourself, but it really, the historic nature of Michigan's second oldest community, the third oldest, by the way, I just found out I was in Monroe a couple weeks ago, because I knew what the first two were, Detroit and Sault Ste. Marie, but I didn't know what the third was, City of Monroe, you're ahead of them, good, that's downstate anyhow. So, I just wanted to present you with a tribute signed by the governor, the lieutenant governor, myself, and Representative Chatfield, just very excited, looking forward to all the celebrations going on. Linda Hoth, we just had dinner this evening, and she's informed me of all the events, be up for Engineers Weekend, the whole nine yards, I know Tribe's doing a lot of great things, be a part of that, so, it's just, it's gonna be a heck of a summer, the way it should be here in the upper peninsula. So, with that, Your Honor, just want to present that tribute to you, thank you very much, thank you. It's an honor to represent you.
Again, thank you very much, Senator, it's a pleasure having you come up, and you're doing an excellent job, we feel, in Lansing for the area, especially the city of Sault Ste. So keep up the good work, and got an election coming up, huh, November, good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, you bet. Public comment, Item Number C, if there's anyone that would like to speak on an agenda item, you may identify yourself now, and when we get to the item, you're gonna be given an opportunity to speak for three minutes. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on an agenda item? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda, Deputy City Clerk.
Under the consent agenda, Item One, approval of City Commission meeting minutes of June 4th, 2018. Item Two, approval of the Airport Advisory Board meeting minutes of May 10th, 2018. Item Three is approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes of May 24th, 2018. Item Four is acceptance of M.D. Transportation work authorization. Item Five, authorization of a budget revision for the DPW complex. Item Six is authorization of a letter of agreement and enabling resolution for the Fire Command P E H P benefits. Item Seven is authorization of a budget amendment for the VoIP project. Item Eight is approval of consent agenda items.
Okay. Is there a commissioner that would like something further explained on the consent agenda? If not, we'll entertain a Commissioner Miller.
I'd like to move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. It's been moved, supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspas?
Yes. Now, we're just waiting for the vote to come up, and then we can, are we, anybody else? Not yet? No, here we go. There we go. Just waiting for the computer to catch up, we're so fast. Special orders of business up yet?
Okay, I'm sorry.
You ready?
It's ready.
Okay, go ahead, introduce it.
Item One, under Special Orders of Business, is the introduction of first reading of an ordinance to permit and regulate the use of barbed wire fencing to protect critical utility facilities located with residential zoning districts, and scheduling of a second reading for the regular City Commission meeting of July 2nd, 2018.
Okay, thank you. City Manager Turner?
Thank you, Mayor. On this matter, I've requested that Community Development Director Freeman present to the commission and community.
Evening, Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So back in February 2017, the City Commission adopted an ordinance to establish fence regulations for non-residential zoning districts. Prior to that, we'd actually been applying to residential districts across the city, regardless of their actual zoning, and that was a bit of a square peg in a round hole, because commercial and industrial districts have a bit of a special need when it comes to fencing that the residential districts didn't fill. In residential districts, for obvious reasons, barbed wire is not permitted, so one of the things that we had to allow for in the commercial and industrial districts was the use of barbed wire. Within that ordinance, there was a carve-out, especially for critical utility facilities, things like water booster stations, substations, power canal, things like that, where these facilities really need to be protected. One of the things that we did not do is go back and change the residential districts to give those same allowances, so that's what this ordinance does. Utility facilities need to exist in all districts, because utility users exist in all districts. So, the ordinance before the commission tonight would provide the same allowances for those facilities in residential districts, the same as they are allowed in commercial and industrial districts, based on what was adopted in 2017. Basic rundown, six feet height maximum, no more than three strands of barbed wire, no concertina wire, so it doesn't look like a prison, let's see, bottom strand of barbed wire has to be at least six feet above the ground, so, things like that, fairly standard barbed wire installation.
Thank you.
The Planning Commission met at their February 22nd meeting, recommended unanimous approval, and the recommendation before the City Commission tonight is to receive any public comment on the matter, and schedule a second reading for July 2nd.
Okay, now, do we have a public comment on the matter, or do we move to the second meeting, see?
There is no public comment scheduled on the agenda for this item, Mayor.
Okay, so, we need a motion, move to the second, do you have anything in addition to add?
Nothing further, Your Honor, except that I appreciate the work that the Planning Commission and administration staff put into performing the due diligence on this type of ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have questions? Commissioner Miller?
I do. How did this come up? Why is this on the meeting tonight? How did this come up?
It was just a housekeeping matter that I identified.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We need a motion. Commissioner Talantino?
I, so, motion to approve the ordinance as presented on first reading, and schedule a second reading for July 2nd, 2018 City Commission meeting.
Support. It's been moved, supported. Are there any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Motion carried, and now we'll just wait for the... There it is.
Under Special Orders of Business, Item Two, it's a second reading of an ordinance to amend Section 10-1911 (7) of the city's zoning ordinance to extend the validity of approved site plans from six months to 12 months, A with a public comment, B with action on the item.
Agreed, thank you. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. As Commissioners are aware, the Planning Commission has unanimously recommended increasing the duration of the validity of approved site plans from six to 12 months. Aside from aligning the validity of site plans with the validity of any variances granted by the zoning board of appeals, which have a period of 12 months validity, approving this would enhance the business-friendly atmosphere cultivated within a city, and provide additional flexibility to developers seeking to construct or otherwise implement approved site plans. The alignment between site plan and variance validity periods will likely also position a city more effectively in its efforts to become a certified, redevelopment-ready community. Finally, increasing the period of validity for approved site plans from six to 12 months would place the city more in line with some of its peer communities with which it is competing for talent and investment. The City Commission has already held a first reading on this ordinance. Accordingly, it's my recommendation that the City Commission take action to adopt the ordinance as presented, and as a note, time has been placed on the agenda for a public comment to be received on this matter prior to the City Commission taking action on the same. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and at this time, we would have anyone interested in providing comment on the site plan from six months to 12 months, would like to do so at this Hearing none, we'll move on to the City Commission. Commissioner Twardy?
I make a motion to approve the ordinance amending Section 10-1.1911 of the city's zoning ordinance to extend the validity period of approved site plans from six months to 12 months.
Support.
It's been moved, supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Baspas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
So, Item One, under Communications, from Commissioner Baker, discussion on parks and recreation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Baker?
Okay, after last week's meeting, I went back and studied the master rec plan for Parks and Rec, and from there, I learned essentially what I was trying to get at, and I called it the master plan, and then went, everything got so turned around, a CIP plan, but what I was really looking for was a asset management plan, or a needs assessment of each park, you know, we need bleachers here, and it's gonna cost us this much this year, and next year, if we don't do it, it'll cost this much, and so forth. So that's what I was looking for, and after speaking with the City Manager about it, and clarifying that, and getting that worked out, it's come to my attention, we don't have those. Is that correct, Oliver, right? City Manager, sorry.
Thank you for that question. At this time, asset management plans do not exist for the majority of parks.
All right. Now, so, because of that, and then going through the master plan for Parks and Rec, it's under Chapter Six, it's page 99 through 101, it says promoting the ongoing maintenance of existing parks and recreation facilities while embracing the concept of asset management. Objective two B, maintain an inventory of existing equipment and prioritize repair and/or replacement of the same checklist of regular maintenance and upkeep by activities, by employees, and volunteers, and then, again, embrace the concept of asset management while preparing for the financial obligations of repairing, replacing, and updating parks and recreation sources. Now, this was adopted by the city's policy in 2016, and it does state that it's gonna take some time to create these asset management reports. However, we're halfway through 2018, and we don't have one done for a park, so I was just hoping to make a motion to focus on two parks, and start with Sherman Park and Anni Osborne, and I believe these exist, it's whether or not they're on paper yet, I mean, I know the City Manager and Dan Myers have an idea of what the needs are at each park, but when, especially for a new Commissioner, when I'm learning about the CIP, and trying to learn about the budget process and whatnot, having that kind of information would help all of us, including Parks and Rec, I believe, so, I'd like to make a motion to start an asset management plan on Sherman Park and Anni Osborne Park to start.
Okay, thank you. City Manager, did you comment, please?
Nothing at this time, Mayor, thank you.
I think you're gonna explain a little bit about where you're at with that.
Oh, my apologies. Yes, as the Commissioner mentioned, there are a number of activities that Parks and Recreation has undertaken in regards to planning for improvements at parks. An example of this is working with the Malcolm Park Pride Committee, I know that they've done some work to create a master plan moving into the future. As the Commissioner mentioned, there are a number of activities underway, but they're not created into one consolidated asset management plan at this time. It is included in the master Parks and Recreation Plan, and the city has made a lot of progress as far as an institution for capital improvement planning over the past five to six years, specifically in utilities, and I think a next natural outgrowth of that work would occur with some of the physical assets, as far as the parks, the buildings, physical structures. Now, having those needs assessments, if you are going out to bid for companies to perform the needs assessments on the physical assets that may require a budget to complete that work, whether it's for the building or energy assessment, depending on the complexity of it. However, there are efforts that can be done internally to leverage what's existing as far as the six-year capital improvement plan, what's existing in the master rec plan, and other plans, the community master plan, to overlay existing processes against our parks, so that we know what each park will need, and it's written down on paper, we know what it is, but, you know, certainly, we're ready to respond to the direction of the City Commission.
Okay, and could you explain a little bit about what the asset plan would do? I mean, because it's on a piece of paper, as I understand it, it would have to have priorities, and then the funding would have to occur?
Right.
Much like the capital improvement plan that we have?
Thank you, Mayor. Exactly. So an asset management plan essentially would take stock of the different assets in parks, different pieces of equipment, it would detail each component that comprises that public property, would assign a dollar value to those pieces, to those properties, the assets, it would project out over the next 15 to 20 years, the needs for replacement, and could establish a recommended funding plan for eventual replacement of those assets. Just like the six-year CIP, simply because the budgets are established in a planning tool, does not mean that it would be funded during budget time unless the City Commission approves a budget with allocations for those improvements.
Okay, thank you. Other Commissioner Collins?
I guess I just have a question. So our CIP plan is a six-year plan, our budget is a two-year plan, we know that there's a lot of assets at the different parks and areas that aren't on either one of them, so when you're building your CIP plan, how do you build a CIP plan without a master asset plan? Like, you have to know what assets you have out there, right, regardless of whether they're gonna be replaced or not, to then determine which ones are gonna be replaced. So, that's just a question, I guess, or a comment, and then the next thing is, is that we're gonna do the CIP plan in what, October, is when we start it?
That's correct, Commissioner, in the October range.
So, would it be safe to say that we could take a look at those two parks at the same time, and that we do the CIP plan, so that it doesn't add additional burden to administration? Instead of splitting it up and having you guys go do it now, if that's the wish of the commission, like they actually have it in October, so we can actually do it at the same time?
That would certainly be an option, Commissioner, and overlaying what we currently do, and I believe you asked about current practices, so right now, the city, whether it's interactions through other organizations which manage facilities, such as two historic sites with the George Kemp Marina, or stakeholder groups, feedback from the public, internal functions that the employees of the department perform, we have a pretty solid grasp on the condition of the parks, and formalizing that into an asset management plan is something that certainly can be done, and I think a logical time to do that would be in anticipation of the six-year capital improvement plan, because that six-year capital improvement plan certainly feeds into the budgeting process, informs the budgeting process, but certainly doesn't guarantee an allocation in the budgeting process.
Correct. I mean, it's just a forecast as far as what assets you have out there, and when you think they're gonna have to be replaced or maintenance on them.
Exactly, and perhaps one other benefit to that type of structure would be recognizing that even if there aren't available funds for all of the intended projects, there may be an interest in other portions of the community in stepping forward for those types of projects.
Commissioner Gary?
So, some of this type of planning is something you're already doing in the, when you instituted the capital improvement plan, correct? And then maybe you could say, or tell us how you prioritize which parks get, we have 30 parks, so which parks get the funding in the capital improvement plan, what that process is, because I think we already have something like that in motion.
Right, that's a great question, Commissioner. So, we prioritize parks, public feedback goes a long way as far as which parks receive attention during the CIP and budgeting process. Certainly, the goal-setting session by the City Commission drives a significant effort by city administration to respond to expectations, I know there are several goals established regarding parks and recreation. Internal discussions regarding our knowledge of parks, the age and obsolescence of the equipment, perhaps utility needs that exist at parks where projects can be completed together in an efficient manner at the parks, these all feed into how improvements are currently planned, and then certainly unexpected operational needs which come up from time to time, and demand immediate attention, which can sometimes push some efforts to a lower priority to respond to things that have an impact on perhaps health, safety, and welfare.
Thank you. Commissioner Talantino?
One thing I just want to add on this situation, just remember, not too long ago, we did the goal-setting, and both of these parks were on that goal-setting and passed, so let's keep that in memory, too. Not necessarily Sherman Park itself, but Sherman Park Campground was passed, and Anni Osborne Campground was passed in the goal-setting, so let's keep that in mind. I believe it's already on our radar at some level, so, that's my two cents on that.
Commissioner Miller?
As a new Commissioner, I, I'm listening to the City Attorney, or City Manager, I'm sorry, goal-setting, internal discussion, was I not here for the public feedback? Because I don't remember that. Was there public feedback on Parks and Rec? Because was I not here for it, or did it not show up?
City Manager?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner. So the public feedback is received by department employees, the department director, myself, and relayed from members of the City Commission to administration. Now, as far as a specific meeting, that has not occurred to receive public input since the time the master plan, master recreation plan was developed, as far as holding a public input, visioning-type session.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Commissioner Collins?
So I guess just to clarify, so we did the CIP plan, and I realize we went through the budgeting process and so forth, but we don't know what we don't know. So, how I look at it is, if you don't, if we don't have some sort of a document, and I don't, it doesn't have to be a, you know, a pretty document, I would like to see something like, when I saw some of the pictures that we saw at the last meeting, and you look at some of those buildings, and they're not even on a CIP plan, well, they're not on my radar, right? But if we have something that shows all of the, all the assets that are out there in a park, or wherever they're at, to where we can say, okay, these aren't on there right now, how did you come up with the priority as far as to create the CIP plan? So, in my mind, when I look at it from a budgeting forecasting, however you want to call it, standpoint, if you don't have an all-encompassing, at least, document that shows what is out there and what needs to be done, whether it's 10 years, 20 years, six years, or two years, how do you come up with a short-term plan if you don't know what your long-term plan is, if you don't know what the assets are? And I don't want to see something where it's gonna be really in-depth, but I'd like to see something, and if we can start with a, like Commissioner Baker says, if we can start with one or two parks, and at least kind of look at how the process would work and what it would do for us, I'm for that.
I think, just to kind of wrap all this up, because what Commissioner Collins talked and the manager answered was that, isn't the process, and in October is a good time to have it pretty well finalized, what becomes part of the plan? So going, going forward from here, if that could be, I think I know Commissioner Baker might be asked the same thing, if that could be initiated so that it's put in writing, some of the, or the asset, an asset plan for those, you're asking for two, at this point, two parks, but I'm sure you have, you have them on all the parks, but they're just maybe not in a format that, that we see, you know, for the most part. Commissioner Baker?
City Manager, would it be realistic to say, you know, by October, when we go through the CIP plan, right, when we do it again? Is that my correct?
Commissioner, is that in regards to the two parks referenced?
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out, will it take you that long to do those two parks? I mean, that's, we're talking October, so that's like five months away, is that pretty normal of a timeframe, or do you think you could get more parks done by then? Because it would be beneficial if you could have as many as you could done by that process when that starts, I mean, I don't know what the...
Right, I think that's a great question. As far as the timeframe, right now, I know that the parks employees are out in the field making as many physical improvements as they can. From a planning perspective, making sure that they're finished before the CIP process starts is key. Could we complete more than two? I believe it's very possible, yes. I would, I would note that there is a difference, just based on discussion, not particularly responsive to your question, but discussion, there is a difference between asset management plans and the maintenance checklist maintenance plans, so that the asset management plan looks at future physical improvements and conditions, replacement of playground equipment, perhaps other more costly improvements and expenses, but the maintenance checklist is really driven by the budget as far as how we have staffing, or resources, or volunteers to go out and maintain properties, which could possibly tie into an asset management plan. So the maintenance checklist is separate than the asset management plan, but we do have maintenance checklist for a number of our facilities.
So, what would fall under the asset management plan? Just the buildings, or the plan itself? I feel like it's all one and the same.
Right, so certainly, the asset management plan would include fixed assets, physical improvements, buildings, pieces of playground equipment, possible landscaping, the drives into the facilities, and then, the actual maintenance checklist would be the day-to-day, we know that staff go out and empty garbage cans once a week, or once a day at each park? So, on a rotating basis.
Yeah, I don't mean, I don't want that information, I just...
Commissioner Collins, you had a comment, or question?
Yeah, I was just thinking that when, because the City Manager and I had talked a little bit about this before, that in October would be a good time to address it, not prior to that, but along with the CIP plan. Am I correct in...
As far as the completion of the documents, Commissioner?
Well, as far as working on the process of completing the documents, yes.
Right, correct. That's something that, if the commission were to provide that direction, that would be something that would be working on, and would be in our, on our radar certainly, as a high priority with the approval of the City Commission, so that it would be given a lot of thought prior to the times developed for the CIP, so...
So, just, I don't know if this is point of view, so, I would support Abby's motion if we can change it to basically what Oliver just said, basically saying we're gonna work on those two, along with the CIP plan in October, because it is a new process, right? I mean, we know that the documents are out there, we know that they had to come up with some idea of where the CIP... We know that they had to come up with some idea where the CIP plan come from. But we want to basically look and see how was the CIP created from all of the other assets that are out there, without getting into the maintenance stuff. Does that make sense?
To me, does it?
Okay.
Address the commission, you understand?
Can I make a motion then? I'll make my motion to, uh, start asset management plans on Sherman Park and Annie Osbourne and to hopefully have them near-completed by the time the CIP process starts in October.
Not, not start, but it would go, you know, it would go along with it.
Right, along with it, yes, yes, sorry.
Okay, question, uh, is that supported?
Yeah, I'll support that.
Commissioner Gary.
I guess I'm a little confused by the concept. I understand that you're looking for more detailed information on how the CIP is derived and why they're giving certain weight to certain parks and improvements. But why, uh, I think that when we go through the goal-setting and, and all of our planning, we already gave the commission's direction that we wanted a couple of parks improved upon. And, um, that's where we give the direction to the, uh, city manager. And I think that if we start doing things like this, we start bouncing around and, and giving misdirection. I don't, I don't have a problem with requesting or asking for more information, uh, in conjunction with the preparation of the CIP so that we can either approve it or not approve it and, and maybe give more emphasis or earlier, uh, treatment to that. But I, I guess I don't like changing the emphasis, because we already did our goal-setting, so we're changing now. We're saying, okay, now we want to reemphasize these two parks. So, I guess I'm a little confused by this concept.
We can do them all.
Excuse me.
Can I respond to that?
You don't have the floor. Um, Commissioner Gary has a floor, and I'm going to ask a, a couple of comments, or I'm going to say a couple of comments. What I think is being asked is that there was an asset plan, uh, prescription in the, in the, um, the goal-setting, or I mean, the, um, recreational plan, um, or the recrea- recreational...
Master.
Master plan that was just adopted.
Right.
That hasn't started yet.
Right.
But if it's in there, I don't know, do we, I don't know that we need a motion by the commission. I think what we do is just let the administration know that come, come October, that, uh, assessment of these two parks ought to be, uh, as a process going forward in October so that they can now prepare some of the information they need to get there by, by October.
Which should be all the parks.
Yeah, all the parks.
As prescribed in the master recreation plan rather than targeting, if you're targeting the two parks just for this, then we're changing our goals.
I'm fine, I'm fine with having all of them. I'd love all of them done by then, if that's, I was just trying to...
Saying that, if the process was prescribed...
Commissioner Baker, you don't have a floor at this point, but Commissioner Gary has a, has a comment, so, let's do that, then we'll have your comment.
If the process is already prescribed for in the master recreational plan and we've approved the plan, and administration is already working towards fulfilling that, why don't we just keep moving forward, rather than trying to change it?
And knowing that the commission now has spoke to that, the process, so that you get a, the feeling of where we're at type of thing? Is that by consensus or whatever you want to, um, okay, now, let's go back to Commissioner Baker.
Okay, so, it's in our master plan that was adopted in two thousand and sixteen. It's two thousand and eighteen, we haven't, it was in May two thousand and sixteen, and it goes to two thousand, it starts in two thousand and seventeen, but it was adopted in May two thousand and sixteen. And, um, it's there, we, it should already kind of be started, so I guess that's why I wanted to make a motion to make sure that, because from my understanding, city manager, you were looking for direction from the commission in order to do this. So, by, when you say direction, do you need four votes to have that direction, or...
Good point, good question.
Uh, thank you for that question. Uh, just from my perspective as administration, direction can come either through a vote or through consensus or from the established process such as goal-setting. Um, or, you know, an indication from the city commission that we know it's included in the master recreation plan. We would like the city administration to focus on this at this time. And certainly, this conversation has crystallized that for, for our minds.
Commissioner Twardy.
I, I feel like we're starting to get kind of into a little bit of a slippery slope here. I feel like we, we've already completed the process. We've got city administration working towards a set of goals that we set, we voted on, we voted on the budget. And I, I don't think that we should start over-directing city administration into taking care of the city, because that's why we hire them to take care of the city. And we're not out in the parks every single day looking at them, being able to control what the asset management is, because sometimes things break. And so, if, if the admini- if the city commission has already said, you know, we want you to do this, but then something breaks and Dan has to be able to fix it, and we have to reallocate the money. I, I think we're just starting to get into a little bit of a micromanagement-type thing. And we, we have to trust that Oliver is doing the best thing for the entire city and that the department heads do their job to the best of their ability. And, you know, and we set the groundwork and we overset, we set the overarching policy and the budget to help them complete those processes.
Commissioner Nor.
Is there a motion on the floor? Has there been one?
Right now, there is.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gary.
Just a constructive comment. Uh, if we're going to have this type of a discussion and we're going to discuss the specifics, I know that we've already met, read the master recreation plan, but it'd be nice to have the background material before the meeting so that we could be a little bit more in tune. The only thing that it says is Commissioner Baker's request an item to be placed on the agenda. So, I didn't have the specific information, so I could read it and be prepared for this discussion either. So, I'd appreciate that in the future.
For sure, sorry.
Okay. Commissioner Collins.
So, I guess two things. So, I, from my standpoint, I'm not looking for maintenance or things that break. I'm looking at it from a standpoint of, if there's assets out there that are deteriorating, that are identified, and they're not on the budget, and they're not a CIP plan, but we know that they're going to be an issue in the future, I just want to know that there's a place or a document where I can see that. Because I noticed there's been some things that have been brought up lately that aren't anywhere in the CIP or the budget. Um, the other thing is, is I think in the master plan, when I read that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that it says that the asset management plan was supposed to be created within two years of that inception. Am I wrong in that?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. I'd have to review the, the master plan to confirm that point.
Because I think, I read somewhere where it said two years, so...
Okay, I think the process has begun. Um, and I think all the comments are good. Um, you know, and you're saying, um, the ma- you asked the managers, does he need a, an actual directive from the commission? Or does it, what, what's there going to work? And I think, uh, let me just finish the, I think the discussion tonight, I think he's got the idea of where we're, we're at as far as, I think we want an asset plan for, for the parks in, by October, or in October, that can continue to go forward so that the, um, the recreational, um, plan, you know, master plan, uh, that's, that's going forward. I'm sure that staff can, can come, come up with that and provide it at our budget session again. So then we, we're looking at that whole process. Okay, Commissioner Baker, last comment.
Yeah, as long as we have it when it comes to budget, so we're prepared and we're, we understand the needs of all of our parks as a commissioner, in order to make that decision during budget and the goal-setting process, having that information would be helpful.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I think we're, I think we're good. And I think you know where we're at with that. And I thank everyone for their comments, it was a good discussion. Oh, there's a motion.
Do we have to take it off, or how does that work?
Um, you'd like to rescind the motion?
I mean, can't we just vote on it and vote to do it?
Right, we don't need it, so, we're not getting involved in that bailiwick for the most part. You know, it's already, some that we've already done. I mean, we, we voted on the process. He understands now that, uh, that's a priority. So, I, I think we don't have to. And the consensus is that's the way we want to go, I would think. Will you draw your second?
Yeah, I'm good with that, Abby, just as long as, you know...
As long as it gets done.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah.
Well, we'll know if it's not done, but...
Yeah, you're going to know, I mean, we're all going to know, yeah. Yeah, okay, moving on. Thank you.
So, so the motion was rescinded then, Your Honor?
Yes.
Item two under Communications from the Sioux-St. Marie Downtown Development Authority, authorization to apply for a CDBG grant for two-two-one West Portage Avenue Rental Rehabilitation Project.
Okay, thank you. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. On this matter, DDA Director will address the city commission.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Commissioners. Uh, I have a number of items because of, it's the end of the year and I'm trying to cram everything in. I'll try to be quick. Um, two or three years ago, actually, actually, almost close to five years ago, uh, it was made a, a goal, um, by the Downtown Development Authority and by the city commission to increase housing downtown. And we have worked substantially to, um, get those, uh, get new, get housing to happen in our upper-floor, uh, spaces. We have over seventy thousand square feet of vacant upper-floor space downtown. Uh, and one of the most interesting buildings, uh, that has been, um, looked at for a long time by various folks is two-twenty-one West Portage. It's owned by the Kalias, Bob and Misty Klia, and, uh, currently home to second childhood and, uh, adults, too, as well as Sioux Brewing Company. And, um, I don't know if, uh, can you see the picture? Uh, so this is the, the building, actually, the owners, uh, Bob and Misty recently rehabbed the exterior. And, uh, we had been working, uh, for quite some time to figure out a, a funding model that would allow them to, uh, turn the upper-floor units into apartments. There's currently twelve very tiny, uh, I, I believe it was Coast Guard housing or, or, uh, almost like motel rooms back in the thirties when it was first built. And that's what's still up there, just, uh, little tiny, um, rooms and, uh, narrow hallways. And that is an example of one of the room, Conrad Ganshorn owned the building, and he actually stripped all the paint off the doors many years ago, and then he sold it. Um, this is another picture, there's, uh, all sorts of weird stuff up there, Easter bunnies. Um, and another picture, uh, wood floors, rough condition, hasn't been lived in for years. Uh, we, we, uh, applied for a CDBG grant. Uh, we've been applying for multiple CDBG grants, uh, through the Federal Housing Urban Development, uh, Agency, and it comes, the money is allocated to the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, uh, and we compete for it with many cities around Michigan. Um, we snuck in, pretty much, they were changing the program on rental rehabilitation. We snuck in an application two years ago and have been fighting ever since to make sure that the money was available for this project. Uh, over s- uh, over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars will be invested total, with approximately fifty percent coming from the state and fifty percent from the owners. Uh, the first, uh, for the first year, the six, uh, four of the six units will be rent-restricted. After year one, it's lifted and it becomes open, uh, they can charge whatever they can, whatever they can get for it. Uh, it becomes market rate. Um, so, uh, within one year, we will have six new market-rate apartments downtown on Portage. And, uh, what, what we would need tonight for, uh, support, we received a letter of interest. The money has been set aside in Lansing for this project. We have to officially authorize the application and, uh, begin the process to, uh, pretty much get the funding.
Okay, thank you. City manager, additionally?
Uh, nothing further, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. City commission, any questions? Thank you, Justin. I know you're not going too far.
No, actually, to add one more thing, um, just so that the city, um, I, the city's done many CDBG grants. The funding is actually, the grant is given to the city, and then the city grants the money to the, to the property owner. So, we actually are the grantee.
Okay. And there's, uh, there's two recommendations, uh, before us and discussion with the city attorney. Since we're only moving a public hearing to July second, um, it's one motion at this point, so, um, who would like to go? Commissioner Twardy.
I'll make a motion to authorize the application for a CDBG grant on behalf of Kalia Properties LLC to construct six apartments at two-twenty-one West Portage Avenue and the release of an RFP for Certified Grant Administrator Services.
Support.
Move support. Are there any questions? Uh, rule call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy? Yes. Mayor Bospas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item three under Communications from the Sioux-St. Marie Downtown Development Authority, request to schedule a public hearing and establish funds for City of Sioux-St. Marie Downtown Facade Product, Project, uh, CDBG.
Okay, thank you. And before we, we go to that, let me, um, one vote, uh, let me at least ask the city attorney, I'm involved with the, one of the properties on, uh, Portage Avenue, on, uh, West Portage. It will be, uh, getting some of these, um, funds, so I would think I would have to abstain. It's on. There it is. Yeah. It's on.
As always, it's best to abstain in those situations, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I can at least, I can at least introduce the information. Can't do that either. Uh, Commissioner Gary, you're on. Mayor pro tem.
Can you be, can you be in the same room?
Well, I guess it goes to the city manager.
Yeah, it goes to the city manager, at this point.
I will defer to the DDA Director.
A few months ago, the city commission, uh, voted, uh, to, um, actually do what you just voted on for the rental rehab project. This is the same funding, but it's specifically for historic preservation. Uh, we completed a ra- our first round of these grants, uh, two years ago with five buildings downtown. This is our second round that we've received authorization for, and we are actually in the final, um, stage of completing the grant process and beginning construction. Uh, we have, uh, conducted our, um, environmental review. I was the certified grant administrator on the project. Um, the environmental review, uh, looks at all federal, uh, agencies and all of their restrictions and, um, requests regarding spending federal funds on, on downtown properties. That environmental review is accepted, as well as our State Historic Preservation Office review, and they also accepted the proposed work, which I still can't quite show you, the renderings, they're, they're almost done, um, but I can kind of quickly describe. So, uh, there's a, a picture up, if you can switch to it. Oh, there, there we go. Okay, so the first one is Arvstrom Pharmacy. This is Arvstrom Pharmacy as it currently stands, um, in the eighties or nineties, somewhere in there. Uh, we undertook a process of adding kind of these shingle, what are called shingle mansards. This building actually has three upper windows located just kind of above the light pole and across the center. The apartment there was abandoned in the nineteen thirties or so. It'll be storage and spaced for the Arvstrom Pharmacy, um, but the entire exterior of the building will be completely rehabbed and, uh, brought back to more of what I would call kind of a Victorian look, uh, including a lot of decorative trim. The windows will be re-exposed, and there will be, um, a, a new storefront and, uh, and, um, brick and, uh, things like that. So, that building is going to be hugely different. Um, the next one is the Alphabar. The Alphabar is incredibly historic. The owners privately upgraded the east side of the building two years ago and added their own mural. Um, while we were doing the, the downtown mural projects, the Chresselises decided to undertake that themselves, and they did a great job on the, on the west side, I'm sorry, on the east side. And then we applied for a grant to do both front and rear of the building. This will be a historic, uh, rehabilitation with, uh, new windows on the upper portions, uh, re, uh, reconstruction of the upper masonry. You can see where there's a lot of mortar and plaster that's been, um, applied to the bricks up there. That'll be all repaired, and then the entire front will be completely removed, and it will be a historic, uh, glass storefront, um, similar to when it was first built. Uh, it's going to be a huge change to that block. Uh, and then finally is the McClellan Building, um, or it's owned by Carol McClellan and, uh, her family. And it was originally called the Crisp Laundry Building, and the Cadillac Supply Building was a laundry building for all of the ships that came in and dropped out their laundry. Uh, under the vinyl siding, it's a, kind of a light blue vinyl siding, it had kind of a, um, a faux-Victorian application, I think in the nineties or eighties as well. All of that will be, we, uh, peeled off. It's brick underneath with a tremendous amount of amazing, um, with vague similarities to the Island Books and Crafts Building in terms of its architecture. So, uh, really interesting, uh, there will be three storefronts that will be... So really interesting, there will be three storefronts that will be completely redone with higher, larger glass windows. And hopefully a phased approach to adding a use on the second floor down the road. These projects in total are over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars as well. So just between these two, two grant applications, we are nearly at, I believe, one point three, one point four million being invested downtown in the next year or two. And where we are at with, with this process is the environmental review. To finalize this grant and in the future finalize the grant you just approved applying for, we have to allow the public to review the environmental review packet, which is currently published in the newspaper and available at my office. When that review is completed, there will be a public hearing on July 2nd per the commission's approval. And, and then official request to release the funds and deposit them in our accounts that we create tonight.
Thank you, Justin. Are there any questions for Mr. Nepper? City Manager, do you have any comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Collins? Did you have your pen up? City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. No further comments.
And there are two motions listed and the city attorney has indicated that those could be one motion. So do we have a motion? Commissioner Twardy?
I'll make a motion to schedule, do we have to schedule a public hearing? No. Okay, for July 2nd, 2018, regular meeting of the City Commission for the purpose of affording citizens an opportunity to examine and submit, submit comments on the proposed application for the CDBG grant. And then to establish three funds for the purpose of receiving escrow private funds and the CDBG funds. And said funds to pay various contractors for works completed at 411 West Portage, 105 West Portage, and 415 Ashman Street respectively, and to approve corresponding budget amendments.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Are there any questions or comments? Rule call, please.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item four under Communications for this, from the Sioux-St. Marie Downtown Development Authority. Authorize a budget revision for the DDA Fund 244.
Okay, thank you very much. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. DDA Director Nepper, please.
Okay.
The, four and five kind of tell a story a little bit in terms of the DDA funding situation. So technically, it would, it would be nice to explain five, item five first. But is that an option by chance?
Pardon me?
Is it an option to discuss item five before item four because I entered them backwards on accident?
We'd have to go to item five if that's the case? You rather, you want to discuss?
I'd like to start with item five if it's possible.
Okay.
But-
Can we, city attorney, can we do that?
Your decision, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, yes. We can back, we'll go to item five and come back to four.
Thank you. It's mostly because it's a chronological calendar explanation. When we entered the fiscal year twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen and eighteen, the DDA has been in, as many of you know, a tremendous amount of turmoil in terms of our budgets, our operational budgets. The tax, finance districts have continued to decline and our operations, thanks in tremendous part to the investment of taxpayers. And the City Commission has allowed the DDA continue to operate at a healthy and progressive level. But when we entered the original, or the beginning of the year, we had actually had a negative fund balance in the Downtown Development Authority's Fund 244. Primarily from my limited understanding, due to a lot of transfers that we were working on to make sure that we were funding our debt service, our parking garage debt service and, and due to probably some oversight on my part in terms of preparing the budget. We had funding set aside in various capital projects over the years. And in order to rectify our budget situation with the negative fund balance, the DDA Board voted a few, I believe last month, to return, to reallocate certain capital project funds to the DDA General Fund to correct that fund balance. We had approximately twenty-five thousand dollars in a fund that was established a number of years ago to, to look at improving the fire hall parking lot. And then a few years ago, the DDA Board transitioned that funding into investing in the bearish's parking lot, mostly due to the, I'm sorry, parking lot four behind bearish's, due to, you know, especially a lot of the potholes that were popping up. We never spent it because we never had the funding to completely redo the lot. So the funds have been sitting there and recently, thanks to City Manager Turner and City Engineer Bessista, we've applied for a, a new, we're, we're beginning a process of applying for an infrastructure grant that may take care of all of our parking lot issues downtown if we get lucky. So we're banking on that and we'd like to reallocate that twenty-five thousand dollars from the parking lot fund to correct the fund balance, as well as forty-five hundred dollars that was left over after completing the Maloney Alley Parking Lot. It's the large vacant parking lot that DDA CO-coded it and striped it in order to allow for free parking. We, we came in under budget on that. And then we came in under budget on our, on our three hundred and fiftieth brackets purchase. And so with those three combined, there's about, I believe, thirty, thirty-three thousand dollars that will take care of that negative fund balance and allow us to end the year at least at zero, if not slightly positive.
City Manager?
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation, Justin. As the Director noted, the, the grant that we're currently preparing is preliminary. I think that it would come in front of the City Commission for formal submission if we're given a tentative approval from the MEDC. So right now, we're continuing to work on that. And that would, as the Director mentioned, addressed a variety of needs. And also, this is a release of funds from Fund 248, which is the DDA Capital Projects Fund. These are all funds addressing the DDA.
Okay. Commissioner Talentino, you'd like to make a motion?
Sure. Motion to authorize a budget revision to transfer the following capital project funds to balance DDA Fund. Forty-five hundred dollars remaining balance of Maloney's Alley Parking Lot Project. Twenty-five thousand dollars remaining balance from the Parking Lot Four redesign project. And four thousand dollars from the Banner System Project. The totals of these three transfers is thirty-three thousand, five hundred dollars.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any questions? Rule call, please.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Bospas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Now we'll go back to item number four.
All right. Item number four is really a good news story. After beginning the year, we, we got accepted into the Michigan Main Street Program. Michigan Main Street really focuses on encouraging the Downtown Development Authority to operate, to a certain extent, as a nonprofit and to really look at fundraising as, to offset our, our, our need for continued tax revenues. While it's just a small percentage of the total losses that we've taken in, in tax revenues, we've surpassed our revenue goals by, I believe we're at a hundred and seventy-six percent of our budget in revenues this year, almost exclusively due to our downtown business owners and our, our business folks and individuals that have contributed through pledges, through charitable giving, through investing, sponsorships, and a tremendous amount of fundraising. With the fundraising, there's always a little bit of expense that we didn't expect, that we didn't budget for. So in order to throw a party, you have to pay out a little bit and then you get a lot. There was two, there was two things that we tried to do, two things that we worked on. One was the summer, we had not planned on it at, in the beginning when we wrote the budget. But we took on Maloney's Alley Beer Fest as our number one fundraiser for the Downtown Development Authority. And we profited, it cost us approximately eight thousand dollars and we brought in approximately sixteen thousand, split the profits between a charity that we had agreed on and the DDA pricing from vendors. This would be rebid later in the summer and have a separate recommendation to the City Commission at a later time. Accordingly, it is my recommendation that the City Commission approve the received prices as presented by city administration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Talentino?
So moved the motion to authorize the purchase of maintenance materials from low bidder meeting specifications for the fiscal year eighteen and nineteen as presented.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any questions? Commissioner Miller?
Where is Everett Goodrich?
Added a profit of approximately four thousand dollars. As a side note, because I know there is some, there has been some discussion about this. The DDA has been offering naming sponsorships to a lot of our events. So for example, Park Ray's side of a parade of lights pays a sponsorship dollar amount to, to have their name associated with the parade of lights. Maloney's Alley does the same for the Maloney's Alley Beer Fest. And as long as they continue to, to do that, that's why the DDA continues to carry that name forward with the event. We are planning to surpass our budget goals this coming year with that event. And, and, and all of our events in total are beginning to make a small profit. It's the first year that we are prioritizing, looking at ways that we can charge for services, charge for whether it's ticket sales or vendor fees or sponsorships. Another great example was, this was the first year that we offered a sponsorship for the I-500 Pub Crawl, which was always a very small fundraiser for the DDA based on t-shirt sales. We had New Holland Brewing Company out of Holland, Michigan, offer a two thousand dollar sponsorship to have their name on the back of the shirt. That was almost pure profit for that event. So we're beginning to look at the ways we do things in, to a certain extent, like a business, in order to make sure that we're increasing our revenues. So all that being said, because we had unbudgeted expenses in order to help us make more profits for the DDA, we are requesting a ten thousand dollar amendment to the, to the expense line item because that's what we had to invest in order to get close to a hundred and seventy-six percent of the revenues that we are looking at. Because we've just corrected the fund balance, we'll be able to use some of our additional revenues to offset some of these additional expenses and hopefully close out the year, going to next year in a much better financial spot.
Thank you. That's all good news. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's just worth clarifying that it does note the 2017 Maloney's Michigan Beer Fest. That is because it occurred in August during the current fiscal year. So if it were to occur in July of this year, then it would be the 2018 Maloney's Beer Fest in the 2019 fiscal year. So that's why it's the 2017 event.
Okay. Commissioner Twardy?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you for clarifying. Because when you, I had a few phone calls today from some business owners and they were concerned that the General Fund or the city was starting to fund beer festivals downtown. And, and then the other one too with the rail jam. So it's not really, it's, it's not the city funding anything. It's, it's us transferring revenues that you've gained back into the DDA Fund to offset the negative balance.
There, there are, there are some that would argue that based on my salary and other operational costs that go toward the, you know, because this, because the City Commission, because our shortfalls, it's the parking garage and the City Commission allocating funds to help with our general operations. Overall, there is, you know, probably a little bit of public support that goes towards some of our events and festivals. However, the way I'm hoping that, that we all can look at it is that if you look at the individual line items of each event, as long as I don't fail at kind of the, or we don't fail at the, the revenue goal of the events, we should be coming out over time with a profit. Rail Jam is a great example that was mentioned in the, in the summary, I believe. We took a loss on that event, but overall, our events as a whole paid off. So Rail Jam is under some, I would say, some scrutiny as to whether or not we'd have to come up with some sort of major sponsor in order for us to, to cover the cost of snow hauling or snow plowing in the future.
Okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Baker, you can make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize a budget revision to increase expenses by ten thousand to be funded from the excess event revenues account to be applied to the following expense line items. Five thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents should be budgeted to the line item 244-56000-795. Administrative expenses to cover the unforeseen costs of snow hauling and removal for the lockside rail jam. And four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and twelve cents should be budgeted to the line item. Events expense to cover the unbudgeted costs associated with the 2017 Maloney's Michigan Beer Fest.
Support. It moved and supported. Are there any questions? Rule call, please.
Mayor Bospas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
No.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item six under Communications from the Sioux-St. Marie Downtown Development Authority, Parking Deck Gate System Replacement.
Okay. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the final item to which I defer to Justin Nepper.
Should get him a chair.
All right. Last year, the City Commission wasn't, I believe, at budget process. And even before that, we found out at the DDA, we oversee the parking garage and manage it and maintain it. Our existing gate systems, which were made by a company called Federal APD, went extinct. The company went out of business. There are no parts available. We have been scavenging eBay for, for a few parts here and there. And the whole gate system has just become defunct. Our maintenance, our existing maintenance provider that's out of Detroit and comes up once every few months said that they are no longer able to work on it because they have no parts. So all that being said, at the beginning of the year, we began discussing, taking certain capital projects that we had set aside for parking garage maintenance and allocating them towards a replacement gate system with additional, hopefully additional revenue controls. And additional investment over time will help us stabilize and, and pay off. And especially will be providing better customer service. I have two pictures that aren't that great, but we had three bidders. Both, all, actually two companies that bid three different types of gate systems. Traffic and Safety out of Kalamazoo bid two different gate systems. And International Controls and Equipment bid the, the third. Based on our research at the DDA and with the parking staff, Natasha Dewey helped me tremendously with this, we decided that the middle bid, which is made by a company called Teba out of Israel, actually, and they import, I believe, to Michigan somehow or other. They had the best gate system. It comes with proprietary software that has no monthly fees. And that's what we were most concerned about is what type of hidden fees. When you have to, and when you have to enter in, we have to daily enter in permits, information, process tickets, make sure that we know exactly who's coming in and out and make sure they're being charged appropriately. And that was a, a problem that we've always had with our past systems. This system comes with a software package that is free and has exactly the tools that we need, especially as we deal with our largest user, which is Memorial Hospital. And the, the gate system is incredibly intuitive. Natasha and I drove to Wixom two weeks ago, which is where the company is headquartered that sells this. We were able to get fully trained on the system. And we also went to the City of Ann Arbor and checked out the Teba gate systems that are, that are active in a City of Ann Arbor parking garage. It comes with everything from voice controls. Any of us could program our voice and say, you know, please pay your ticket, things like that. Very, very intuitive, very easy maintenance, meant for cold weather, meant for all the extremes that we might face. The total for the, the most affordable bid was, I believe, about eighty-five thousand dollars from International Controls and Equipment. That equipment was at Eastern Michigan University and we did check that out in their Eastern Michigan University campus parking lots. Very affordable, very, it seemed slightly- Very affordable, very, it seemed slightly cheaply made, and it came with a $500 and some dollar monthly fee forever in order to use the software. So, after three, I believe it's three and a half years, we will, that would equal and then surpass the second bidder, which is Teba. Teba, I believe, is at $111,000 approximately. And all of these gate systems, our lease agreement with War Memorial Hospital is that they pay 25% of the total of our capital improvements at the garage. So, the second, this system that we're recommending and that the DDA has recommended purchasing would be approximately $111,000. And 1150, I believe, if I remember my numbers, and then we would be reimbursed 25% of that. I believe I did, I didn't realize, and I was talking to the finance director this morning at staff meeting, that our budget would need to show the full expense, that the reimbursement, you know, would come in later. So, right now, I don't know if, that's the only thing that I would, I guess, request from the city manager, if there's any clarity on that for this vote tonight.
City Manager?
Right. Thank you for that question, and the work of the finance department is certainly appreciated. The total cost, as noted in the recommended action, is $112,123. 25% of that would be reimbursed by War Memorial Hospital, and that would be in the amount of $28,030.75. The balance to the city, $84,092.25. And I think it's worth noting that currently the city has just over $87,600 in capital funds set aside for the parking garage. A portion of that was a residual from a remaining project, and there's also $35,400 which have been set aside previously for lighting upgrades, which are being used for this purchase. So, certainly, lighting upgrades are still in need in the future from a cost perspective. So, the motion does include the total cost of $112,123, recognizing that there's a reimbursement. And also, when the city commission awards a bid to something that may not appear to be the low bid at first, it's important to read it into the record, and you've done that as far as mentioning that the monthly maintenance fee that is not there with the Teba system, essentially, that's a three and a half year difference between the low bid and the second low bid.
Thank you. City Commission? Commissioner Talantino?
One quick question. Do we need to make a motion to waive the bidding process in this situation?
No. No.
No, Commissioner.
We don't, okay. I'll make a motion to authorize the purchase of the TBA parking gate system from Traffic Control Systems of Wixom, Michigan, for the cost of $112,123, with a 25% of the total cost reimbursement by War Memorial Hospital in the amount of $28,030.75, and to authorize corresponding budget amendments.
Support.
The move's supported. Are there any questions? Rule call, please. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
No.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Bospas?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item seven under Communications is from Mr. Tim Moher, request for participation on Sugar Island Ferry Service Blue Ribbon Committee.
Okay, thank you. Evening, Mr. Moher. Tim?
Honorable members of the Sioux-St. Marie Commission, Your Honor Mayor Bospas, my name is Tim Moher. I'm here tonight to request participation by the city in a Blue Ribbon Committee to speak with the United States Coast Guard, the United States Army Corps of Engineers, and the Lake Carriers Association. Steve and I have, Steve Canelo and I have spoken about this, and he is ready to serve on the Blue Ribbon Committee if the commission sees that as in your interest. And also, Steve and I had lunch today, and we talked about possibly putting the fire chief on there, and I thought that was a very good idea. What's been happening is we, as you recall, had a request for assistance that the city commission participated in. This got us a meeting with the Admiral, but so far, we haven't had any real result on our request to assist. And we'd like to put together a committee to engage the Coast Guard and the Army Corps and the LCA in a dialogue. There is a ton of information that has come out from research, and recently, we were given the operational plans for the 1970s. And I tried to get to the commissioners these plans so that you could see what the priority was that Sugar Island and Nevis Island had back in the 70s, and what we're having right now is a great deal of difficulty. When I came to you in, I think it was early March, for the request for assistance, we were here asking for assistance for Sugar Island. And then, during the breakout, Nevis Island won the stakes for being stranded longest at 26 days. This year, between Sugar Island and Nevis Island, we were stranded for some 40 days. This is clearly unacceptable. We have to get people to work. We have to get students their education, and we have to get medical treatment for people that need it daily on these, well, particularly on Sugar Island. So, I'm asking to borrow Steve and the fire chief to be part of this Blue Ribbon Committee. And I asked some people to come with me tonight who are going to be part of the Blue Ribbon Committee. First, I'd like to introduce Tony McLean, retired university president. Jennifer McLeod, tribal council for Sioux Tribe, just got done testifying before Congress in Washington, DC. We have Don McLean, Jim Martin from the county commission. We have Frank Huntjack and Jack Kimble from Sugar Island. Jack Kimble is on the youth board, would like to be on the committee. So would Don McLean. We have some gentlemen here from Nevis Island. Les Leighton, retired from the head of the road commission in Chippewa County. Robert Mountpass is, I believe, the president of the Nevis Island Improvement Association. So, we would like to put together this committee.
That's for people at home.
Okay. We'd like to put this committee together to engage the powers that be so we can straighten out this difficulty that we have on ice breaking.
Okay. A question for the city manager and city attorney, certainly. Our fire chief, what kind of a commitment is it going to be? Do we know?
Minimal.
Oh, minimal, okay. You have any problem with that? City Manager?
I could certainly speak to the fire chief. I believe that if it were not him, it could certainly be somebody who's qualified, particularly given the strong interest that we have in emergency operations with, in partnership with Sugar Island and the other stakeholders.
City Attorney? Are you interested in serving on that committee?
Yes, I am, but not exactly for the reasons you might think. When I was in law school in the late 70s, I had an environmental law professor. He had a graduate level course at Wayne State University. And myself and Tony Andry, who was in law school with me at the same time, I had to do, all the students had to do, we had to do a project for class. And I chose, or Tony and I chose, as our project, the winter navigation, which was the extended season. And we spent a lot of time reviewing the environmental impact statement, proposed environmental impact statements, and criticisms to the environmental impact statement as it related to the experimental winter navigation season that we had in the late 70s. So, I gained a lot of interest in not only that particular environmental impact statement, and the law that goes into such questions and matters, but also the river itself. And as you all know, I spent a lot of time on the river.
Okay. City Commission, so we don't have any problem with that? Want to make a motion? Commissioner Twardy?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Steve Canelo and pending conversation Chief Labonte to the Blue Ribbon Committee to assist all of our outer islands in our county with service back and fro.
Support.
The move's supported. Just a yes. Voice vote? Voice vote? No, we already have to vote on the machine. All those in favor, see anybody by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
What was saying sign?
Thank you very much.
Motion carried unanimously. Okay? Our vote will come up here in a second, I would guess.
Yeah.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Okay, sure. Hang on.
I just clicked it unanimous.
We'll take a four-minute, four-five minute max. Are we going to?
I don't know why it's not popping up. I can click Mark Unanimous and...
Can we come back to it? Can we just, while you work on it, we'll take a short recess for four minutes for a voting call if you want, or, okay? Yes. Yes. Can you click everybody? Can you click everybody? Yes?
Yeah.
Hi, Jim.
Hey, Coach. Hey, you bet, Tim. Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Hello, Mr. McLean.
Mr. Gary?
I certainly like that shirt. Yeah, that's super fancy. No, I really like it. It actually adds a lot of nice color to your face.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
We'll call the meeting back to order? Okay, item number, item G is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Item one under the city manager's report would provide for the approval of a collective bargaining agreement with the police records unit. As commissioners are aware, city administration has been engaged in negotiations with the police records bargaining unit for the past several months. The prior agreement covered the time period of July 1st, 2014 through June 30, 2017. Included for review and consideration by the commission is a negotiated successor collective bargaining agreement, which could be entered into by the city and the unit as represented by the police officers' labor council. Specific changes to the existing agreement include a clarification that the part-time meter enforcement officer will be covered by the terms of the agreement, a clarification to the section covering employee dues checkoff, and an update that the Michigan Employment Relations Commission will be used for arbitration, the incorporation into the agreement of a vacancy call and procedure, the inclusion of language that will facilitate a distribution of PEP benefits for this unit, which already receives PEP benefits, a modification to the vacation schedule to permit five weeks of paid leave to be taken after 15 years, as well as the elimination of the six weeks of vacation being provided after reaching 25 years of service and a requirement that 30-day notification be provided for the use of vacation, a modification to life insurance benefits to bring them into line with those received by the clerical bargaining unit, the inclusion of a negotiated cap on the accrual of compensatory time, and the provision of a structure for same, and 2% wage increases for each of the fiscal years covered, and 30%, 30, excuse me, not 30%, 30 cents per hour wage adjustments as detailed within the included wage table. The term of the agreement would run from July 1st, 2017 through June 30, 2021 for four fiscal years. The total cost of the additional provisions are expected to be less than $7,000 for fiscal year 19, inclusive of both wage and fringe benefits. As commissioners are aware, the city has maintained fiscal stability under difficult circumstances that are impacting many other municipalities within the state, and circumstances unique to the city. Concurrently, the wage increases agreed upon by the parties, in my assessment, strike the correct balance between ensuring this stability continues into the future and attracting and retaining skilled employees whose efforts contribute to the advancement of the community. On behalf of city administration, I would like to thank the members of the police records bargaining unit for their continued contributions to the city and serving as frontline ambassadors in challenging circumstances. Accordingly, I would recommend that the city commission approve the negotiated agreement as presented. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gary?
Make a motion to approve the negotiated successor collective bargaining agreement between the Sioux-St. Marie and Police Records Bargaining Unit as presented.
Support.
The move's supported. Are there any questions? Rule call, please.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Bospas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item two under the city manager's report would provide authorization to purchase maintenance materials for the 2019 fiscal year for the Department of Public Works. As commissioners may be aware, prior to each fiscal year, the Department of Public Works reviews its upcoming aggregate materials needs based on upcoming projects and current inventory. This year's needs include washed stone, 22A gravel, Class II fill sand, topsoil, cold patch, concrete, and ice control sand. In writing specifications which generally mirror the Michigan Department of Transportation's, the city requests delivered and picked up pricing. The department typically picks up most maintenance materials, but has found occasions when it was more cost-effective or expedient to have the supplier truck particular materials to the Department of Public Works site or another work location. Bid notifications were placed in the evening news and...
Bid notifications were placed in the evening news and on the City website. Bid packets were also sent to area aggregate suppliers. On June 1st, bids were opened and reviewed, and the City Administration's recommendations placed on the agenda for consideration and approval. The City would use these vendors for the upcoming fiscal year, although typically the only aggregates purchased in the spring are cold patch and concrete. The majority of aggregate purchasing would be done in late summer and early fall. It should be noted that the purchase of ice control sand has been removed from this recommendation. There were irregularities in the bid spec and in unit parking from...
City Manager?
That is a good question. I do not know, Commissioner, but I will review the bid tab information and determine if that is in there.
Okay. It's within traveling distance, I'm sure. Must be a local, some place in Chippewa County.
I see most of these are, these are pretty local.
Alpena? Well, it says Alpena.
Alpena.
Commissioner Gary, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other questions? Rule call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Bospas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item three, under the City Manager's Report, would provide for final budget amendments for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018. As Commissioners are aware, a review of budget's actual performance for the City's operating funds is presented to the City Commission three times per year. The presentation of this report in June includes Administration's best estimate of where the City will be at the close of the fiscal year. To spend public funds without authorization in the form of a budget is in direct violation of Public Act 2 of 68, and final revisions must be authorized by the Commission prior to the end of the fiscal year. Accordingly, in order to ensure adherence to statute, the City takes a conservative approach to estimating expenditures at the end of the fiscal year. This report addresses actual revenues and expenditures through April 30th, at which point approximately 83.3% of the fiscal year has elapsed. Specific highlights pertaining to the General Fund include license and permit revenues lagging at just 47% with a likely pickup as the end of the fiscal year draws near but perhaps not up to budgeted rates. Charges for services are within reasonable amount of 86%. An ambulance service net of associated write-offs is already at its revenue budget and will exceed expectations, and therefore, a budget revision to increase net revenue in the amount of $100,000 will help offset overtime in the amount of $25,000 for an estimated gain of $75,000 in that area. Additionally, in the General Fund, the Finance Department has negotiated with local bankers for improved rate structures and revenue generating investments, which are still sound and fully compliant with governmental restrictions. As a result, interest revenue is at 159% of budget in the General Fund and 96% of budget across all funds. We anticipate that all funds of the City will generate approximately $100,000 in excess of the revenue budget and $75,000 over last fiscal year. The Police Department is running on target at 80% of budget with exceptions for part-time seasonal wages, overtime, payroll other, and equipment repairs. Part-time seasonal wages include charges for additional crossing guards authorized by the City Commission. Overtime in the Police Department is expected to end the fiscal year at $18,000 over, but this is not surprising as this line item is prone to run over when the department personnel levels fall below minimum staffing for extended periods of time or there are shortages in the department in staffing. This overage in overtime is fully offset by the amount the City is under budget in straight wages. An additional $10,000 to cover part-time seasonal wages and repairs is being requested. An additional $6,000 in both fire and ambulance is being requested to provide sufficient funding following several significant equipment repairs in those areas. As well, in the General Fund, all street departments are at 59% when combined, and the efforts of the departments to render services while remaining within budget is valued. Internal budget transfers from sidewalks to alleys will provide the amount needed to cover costs and do not require Commission authorization. Finally, authorization for transfers is also being sought from the General Fund in the amount of up to $35,000 for Surface Parking Fund activities and up to $35,700 for Parking Deck Fund. As Commissioners are aware, the DDA Finance Committee and DDA Parking Committee are currently reviewing additional alternatives in order to mitigate anticipated shortfalls in fiscal year 19 for future snow removal and downtown parking lot maintenance expenditures in the Surface Parking Fund. Follow-up in this area will of course be critical to addressing this in the short term and the long term. As noted elsewhere, City Administration is recommending these transfers to be prepared for fiscal year-end compliance, and if less is needed, less would be transferred to these two funds. Specific highlights from other funds include the fact that in April, the Local Street Fund received an unbudgeted disbursement from Act 51 in an amount just approximating $112,000 due to higher-than-anticipated revenues being collected by the state. These funds support an additional cost for local street winter maintenance approximating $122,000. Additionally, and recently approved increases in state road funding for next year in the amount of approximately $192,000 will help both street funds maintain a healthy fund balance to minimize reliance on the Road Contingency Fund and in turn strengthen the ability of the City to perform additional capital preventative maintenance projects on streets within the city. Additional funding in the amount of $25,000 to increase the total to $79,300 is being provided from TIFA III in support of the L D F A Fund, which is now currently collecting revenue due to the drop of the City's taxable value below the base year value of the L D F A. The revenue for water and sewer, the fund is on target at 89% of budget for water and 93% for sewer as of the end of May. Year-to-date amounts indicate that consumption may actually close this year 3% higher than initially anticipated. If this trend continues for any reasonable length of time, rate increases may be smaller and capital reserves can be reinforced as balances are relatively low after recent larger projects. Operational expenditures for all of the departments within this fund are at or below target of 82%, ranging from 61% to just 83%, and early results for May show a similar pattern. In consideration of the position at which the General Fund commenced the current fiscal year and additional purchases that have been made during the fiscal year such as a new ambulance, it continues to be my projection that the current fiscal year will end with the General Fund being positioned at the fund balance ratio of between 20 and 21%. This projection also considers any refunds which may be due to major property owners as a result of unfavorable outcomes at the Michigan Tax Tribunal level and previously planned equipment purchases. The Department Heads and Finance Department are to be commended for their continuing administration of the budget in a responsible and thoughtful manner, and the hard work of City employees in applying resources to the maximum advantage of the community is certainly appreciated. Accordingly, it would be my recommendation that the City Commission authorize those budget amendments as presented. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gary?
I make a motion to authorize the final budget revisions for the 2018 fiscal year as outlined in the City Manager's lengthy presentation.
Support.
It's been moved, supported. Questions?
Can you repeat that?
Rule call, please.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Bospas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
That concludes the City Manager's Report. Thank you, Mayor and Commission.
Okay, thank you. Item H is a Status Reports. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item one, under Status Reports, is an update on transportation funding. As was just noted in the budget amendment, agenda item, there is approximately additional $192,000 that would be received by the City for distribution through the Act 51 formula for fiscal year 19 because of the $300 million increase in the State's budget.
Good news.
Certainly, it's good news, and much appreciated the support of our elected officials for that amount.
Okay.
Item two is... Item two is an update on the visit by the Riocho delegation, and just a reminder, in 2018, the City will be hosting an adult delegation from our sister city, Riocho, Japan. The City has confirmed that the delegation will be arriving late in the evening on Wednesday 25th and departing in the afternoon of Monday, July 30th. For over 43 years, our two cities have had student and adult exchanges occurring between our communities each year on a regular basis. In an effort to make our sister city's visit to the Sioux during our 350th anniversary celebrations very special, the City is reaching out to the community for host families, for the delegates. We're currently looking for five host families, and we're coming up within five or six weeks of the visit, so certainly appreciate anybody with an interest contacting us as soon as possible. Sioux Gates in my office, and myself will be available at 906-632-5705. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next item.
Item three, under Status Reports, is an update on the 2018 cruising season. Just an update and reminder that the Sioux Historic Sites and Famous Sioux Locks Boat Tours recently welcomed the Pearl Mist as the first cruise ship to dock in the community for the 2018 cruising season. As Commissioners are aware, last year, the three partners, as well as many other collaborators, worked to establish a new site near the Valley Camp to receive cruise ship passengers, cultivate a sense of place, and secure an annual economic impact for hundreds of cruise ship passengers. The Great Lakes Cruising Coalition has indicated that each passenger and crew member has the potential to bring a positive economic impact of approximately $75 to $150 to the community. The City is currently expecting to host either the Victory One or Pearl Mist, a total of 20 to 25 times during this year and next, with each vessel carrying between 140 and 210 passengers. Ongoing support from the U.S. Coast Guard, Customs and Border Protection, and the police auxiliary, as well as the cruise ship companies, has been vital to this project and is appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, item four is an update regarding current legislation that, to bring to the awareness of the Commission and the community, an update on the omnibus budget bill which is currently moving through the process of approval. The budget does include and maintain $6.2 million in supplemental revenue sharing payments, which were included in this current fiscal year's budget. Also includes, as the Commission is aware, $50 million in support of a future Sioux Locks project for what is anticipated to be a state request for match, and the Governor's proposal to distribute any remaining personal property funds left after all units have received. 100% reimbursements as additional revenue sharing payments unfortunately was not included in the final budget agreement, which means that these personal property tax reimbursement dollars will continue to be distributed in the same manner as the past two years. Last update on the budget, House Bill 5908 was passed out of the Senate with language funding fire protection grants at $13.6 million, just under the Governor's recommendation, but historic high watermark for these grants. Certainly know that City Administration and Commission put a lot of time into advocating for the specific budgetary resource for the city. Other updates, Senate Bill 1031, the Utility Personal Property Exemption. This bill would exempt all new electric, gas, and water transmission and distribution system equipment from being subject to local taxation. The Senate Fiscal Agency estimates the total impact on local governments at schools at $576 million, and unlike the existing manufacturer personal property tax mechanisms, this new proposal does not currently include a local reimbursement mechanism. Local utility personal property accounts result in just over $472,000 being collected by local units, including over $220,000, which goes to the city. Again, without a replacement for local reimbursement, the current bill represents another example of how the State has considered and entertained legislation which continues to erode the funding model for Michigan municipalities to provide services to citizens and compete economically. And finally, two updates, House Bill 6049 pertains to local assessing and standardized provisions across the state. This is something that City Administration is monitoring, and it's anticipated that work sessions will be formed during the summer on this. And finally, House Bill 5723, the Municipal Construction Specifications Bill. This is included in the agenda with the fiscal analysis and states that a public entity could not exclude any pipe or piping materials when soliciting bids for a public works project if the pipe and piping materials meets certain standards. Michigan Municipal League believes this bill would interfere with the local engineer's judgment to determine what would be best for utility systems and increase the use of individual product PVC on water and wastewater systems that already can be used, but in many cases and for many reasons, especially in the Upper Peninsula, choose not to utilize. House Bill 5723 could lead also to significant increases in bid protests and litigation over pipe selection on projects, increasing costs, delaying projects, and subjecting engineers and communities to unnecessary litigation. Certainly will continue to advocate against this legislation. As noted, Administration does monitor a variety of bills on a routine basis. These reflect a portion of those bills, but given the current legislative calendar and the fact that this is a lame duck year, legislation may evolve quickly without meaningful input from local units of government, and will certainly apply additional scrutiny on legislation as it goes through the process. And finally, there is information in the agenda for those who wish to review it, www/savemycity.com, provided by the Michigan Municipal League, which talks about the structural changes in the financing of local units throughout the state, and it's a great resource to review.
Commissioner Gary?
Just wanted to make one comment. We always get this information given us from M M L and from the City Manager, but I don't remember it being in this format presented to our media, and I like it.
Mm-hmm.
Good report. Thanks.
Thank you.
Excellent. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. Item number I, managed, presented by the public. Is there anyone in the audience like to make a comment at this time? If you introduce yourself, Frank, we do appreciate it.
Okay. My name is Frank Lusset, and first I'd like to apologize for taking your time on something that does not directly impact the City at present, but is akin to the tribal schools that still leave their scars on our community. It goes without saying that children should only be removed from their families when it is in the best interest of the child. However, our nation is repeating that tragedy without even the pretense of helping the children. Today, June 18th, scores more children were taken from their families as punishment in housed in detention facilities with prison guards as their caretakers. Yesterday was my first Father's Day. It was a happy day, but there was a shadow on my heart the whole time. Shane, the emotion on seeing your daughter for the first time was probably somewhat unexpected for you. Kathy, you remember Ethan's first unambiguous smile and Dylan's first tears? Don, you remember your children running to walk and falling, and you scooped them up, and they curled into your chest? Oliver, how much pride did your daughters have while learning to ride bicycles, and you were ready to scoop them up? Tony, you remember your daughter's first heartbreaks? You couldn't assure them it would get better, but all they needed was your presence. Steve, I don't believe you have any children, to my knowledge. One? I was ready for you not to, but sorry. At any rate, you do feel a protective nature for children. Greg, do you remember the first Father's Day your daughter knew was a Father's Day? And Tim, how nervous were you when your children made their first solo drives, but you knew they would be gone only a few minutes? Abby, did you ever think you'd be so excited about fishing? It doesn't even matter much, though, does it? It matters that you're excited with them. And Jen? I think you've got kids going, too.
Yeah.
Do you remember when the greatest fear became a soundly sleeping infant? Imagine fleeing your country when your child was a toddler. You get to your destination, and helpful porter agent gives you some paperwork, while another smiles and says, "Oh, your baby's had such a long trip. We'll give her a bath while you work on that." And you don't see your child again. More horrific, your child doesn't see you again. Among those of us here, only one, I think, knows a sorrow I've just described, and truth told, a deeper sorrow than that. I hesitate to give a name for fear of disrespecting her sorrow, but no doubt her daughter crosses our thoughts when we slip past the skinny side of the high school. And her sorrow impelled her to move heaven and hell in the Lansing Legislature. Can our collective little sorrows do the same? I don't know. I really don't know what to do. So I came to those unrespected with no real plan other than to open my heart little. If you'll indulge me just a little bit more, I'd like to read an excerpt from Mending Wall by Robert Frost. He only says, "Good fences make good neighbors." Spring is the mischief in me, and I wonder if I could put a notion in his head. Why do they make good neighbors? Isn't it where there are cows? But here there are no cows. Before I built a wall, I'd asked to know what I was walling in or walling out and to whom I was like to give offense. Something there is that doesn't love a wall, that wants it down. I could say elves to him, but it's not... I could say elves to him, but it's not elves exactly, and I'd rather he said it for himself. I see him there, bringing a stone grasp firmly by the top in each hand like an old stone savage arm. He moves in darkness, as it seems to me. But I fear that our nation is moving into darkness.
Thank you, Frank. Anyone else? Okay, item number J, managed presented by the commission. Okay, moving on, we need to adjourn. Commissioner Gary?
I make a motion. Will you adjourn this meeting?
Move.
Support?
Support.